We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation? And Pastor Matt Lovell, would you please come forward from the Oak River Church?
Thank you. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you that you're the giver of all good things. And we just ask now that you'd be with us as you call us together as elected officials, as citizens, to come together and care for those in need and to manage your resources well. So you ask, we ask now that you give us this wisdom and charity towards one another in Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilman Slacka, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Here.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Councilwoman Slacka?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Here.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right. And I'm gonna ask the person with the sign in the air to put it down or... Thank you very much. Down, further down. Further down. Further, further. Lay it on the floor.
Bueller.
It's got pointy things on it. You're scaring me. We've got eyes on you, buddy. All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming this morning. It's a great morning. We are going to go right into our second readings of two zoning ordinances that we have before us here. And so there will be public comment on those, but the public comment will be limited to people who participated in those two zoning cases. Audrey, take it away.
Thank you. I'm gonna read the title block of the first case, the City zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by SLF IV-Florida or FL Benita Alaco LLC for the Benita Exchange mixed-use plan development, MPD project repealing City of Benita Springs zoning ordinance numbers 07-12 on land located at 28090, 28110, 28170, 28190, 28230, 28231, 28191, 28111, 28131, and 28171, Quail's Nest Lane and 12025 Benita Beach Road, Benita Springs, Florida, 34135, on 26.4 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. The first reading of the ordinance was on January 6th. The case thickens to the zoning board on December 15th. And at this time, Jackie Genson will provide a history of the case. The affidavit was reviewed for sufficiency and the advertisement for the hearing was reviewed, and it is legally sufficient. Please proceed.
Good morning. For the record, Jacqueline Genson with Community Development. Just some history on this project. The Benita Exchange CPD was a zoning ordinance that was approved in 2007. The current applicant has come in to request an amendment to rezone it from a CPD to an MPD. Staff did recommend approval with conditions. The case was heard before the zoning board, as Ms. Vance stated. Zoning board also recommended approval with conditions. For purposes of the public hearing, the applicant will go first, and the staff will follow up and will address the issues that came up at the zoning board and be happy to also address your questions at that time.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Wayne Arnold with Grady Minor, representing the Benita Exchange project today. And with me is Keith Jennings, who is the property owner's representative, and Brent Addison from my office, who's the project engineer. I'll give you a brief summary on the project. Most of you may remember Benita Exchange. It's located in the southwest quadrant of your intersection of I-75 and Benita Beach Road. And this property is being amended to also add the Hanula and Briggs parcels that are zoned agriculture, and those are located immediately adjacent to the entrance ramp to I-75. So the project has grown from the original Benita Exchange to include the little trapezoidal piece of property that's located right at the intersection, which I'll highlight that for you if you're not familiar with those parcels, but it's roughly this property. So the total project area is about 26.4 acres. And we're mending a CPD that was previously approved for a large format retail store up to 250,000 square feet. We're now asking for 20,000 square feet of commercial along the frontage that would be made up of some out parcels, and then 264 multifamily residential units to the rear of the property. Significant reduction in traffic with that. We've been discussing with staff. I'll move to the chase. This is our conceptual master plan. And what we've done is provided buffering to the Vasari Country Club to the south and along I-75. And this is our residential component. And we have three out parcels, one adjacent to the Waffle House or one on either side of the Waffle House, and then one next to the Speedway. So significant reduction in what's being proposed with regard to your transportation impacts. Have onsite preserve of almost five acres of vegetation. Some of that will be revegetated. This is our little more illustrative plan and highlights really the one point of discussion that we've had. Quail's Nest Lane that accesses this property and the other out parcels that are there doesn't function very well. It drops suddenly, and you have to make an immediate curve. There's not enough stacking really there today. So we've been discussing with staff, making improvements to that intersection. We'll lengthen it, straighten it, realign the signal, provide appropriate turn lane on Benita Beach Road, which we believe is obviously not the safest condition now with no turn lane into the site. And with that, we have some conditions of what we're doing. We're connecting Sardian Lane over to Home Depot. We're gonna provide a reverse frontage road all the way over serving our easternmost out parcel, as well as providing secondary access to the Waffle House property and Speedway. So we think we'll have a much safer and better functioning intersection for all involved. And that's really been the one single point of discussion. We've been talking, and we have, I think, an alternate condition that Audrey has it written down, and we would offer to talk about really what we can do in terms of regaining some impact fee credits or being eligible for impact fee credits as we make these improvements and coordinate with both the city and Lee DOT. Obviously, Benita Beach Road is a Lee DOT road. Quail's Nest is a local public road that the city maintains. So we'll be making improvements to that, as well as the interconnection, which we think provides some better public benefits. That's really the summary I have, and I don't know if it's appropriate that Audrey might read in the language we've been discussing with regard to an alternate condition.
It would go in the transportation conditions section, and it would say the term "site-related improvement," as it may appear in this zoning ordinance, shall not be determinative for calculating or identifying road impact fee credits. Road impact fee credits shall be addressed at the time of development order pursuant to LDC Chapter 2.
Now, who's proposing that language?
It's by the applicant. And basically, the philosophy is, first of all, going into road impact fee credits is not a jurisdictional matter of zoning. You know, trying to put it in or asserting it into the zoning process is not really appropriate. It's really a time of development order. We have regulations in place that set forth what is site-related, what is not site-related improvements. Now, with this being said, I do anticipate that, you know, the traffic engineers, when they calculate, they will be arguing these many trips equal a site-related versus this many trips is non-site-related. So, but that's really for the engineers to be determinative in community development, not...
At the time of development order.
At time of development order.
So staff's, this alternative language here, is there any purpose that staff sees to have this language here if what you just said was true?
Yeah. The developer is concerned because the ordinance does use the term "site-related improvement." And there is concern because Land Development Code, Chapter 2, also says that if you don't say it's site-related improvement, that they could get entitlement to road impact fee credits. So we're cautious in not wanting to not use those words, but yet we feel those conditions are necessary for the zoning.
You feel this condition that he's stating is...
The other transportation conditions.
Okay.
So this, what this does is allows the developer to make the argument at a later date for entitlement of impact fee credits, but yet it also preserves and protects the staff's decision.
But again, staff's recommendation is to not adopt that particular language?
Right.
Okay.
Well, just to point out, Mr. Mayor, if I can, Steph is supportive of the language that Audrey just read. There was a reference in one of the existing conditions that says this is site-related. I think what she's saying is this language would replace that and allow us to negotiate that at the time of development order.
Thank you, Wayne. Audrey, is he correct about what you think?
Well, what I'm saying is it says here, we have a lot of conditions, and there is not just one that says that different portions will be required, is responsible for bringing certain portions. Let's say Quail's Nest Lane needs to bring it up to city public road standards to private local road standards pursuant to LDC 3 as a site-related improvement.
Yeah, I'm just trying to drill down to what he read. Carl?
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that you ask Jackie how staff feels.
Hi.
Hello. Some of the conditions that specifically identify site-related improvements are carryover language from the 2007 zoning ordinance. So that is why I decided to keep that language as is. It is my opinion that LDC 2 provides the language that we need to rely upon. So that is my professional opinion, but I am not a traffic engineer, so... But I do think at time of development order, the traffic engineers, both in the private sector, the city, and Lee County DOT, will be able to hash out those details. But I do think the applicant is requesting some more comfort. But I personally think that LDC 2 stands on its own.
So, again, simple question. What he read, you don't think it's necessary, or you do, you have no objection to inserting that?
I have no objection to inserting it. I think it just regurgitates what's already in the Land Development Code.
It's no harm, no foul, so to speak?
That is my opinion.
Okay. Good. That's all I was looking for. Okay.
So that will be new condition, 7L.
Okay. We'll get to that sometime. Just wanted to try to muddy that as much as possible. Wayne, you got anything else for us before we go on?
I do not.
Thank you very much.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions for Wayne? Let's just go real quick to our party of record, who is sitting right behind you. I will read the list of parties of record. Rick Steinmeier.
Want to see the site plan?
Yeah, the last one you have. There you go. Thank you. Rick Steinmeier. I was impressed by this, by this project for a number of reasons. One is that it gives access from the side out to Home Depot, which takes a lot of traffic off of, off of the beach road there. Also impressed, we have a commercial area and a residential area. I'm impressed by the buffer between the two. That's always a problem where you got a noisy business or something, and you got a residential neighborhood in the same area. Also, a long enhanced buffer along I-75 and on the bottom here, because, believe it or not, there's noise comes off of that highway when they're driving 80 miles an hour. So I'm impressed with this, and I understand there's gonna be a traffic light or is a traffic light at the entrance, which will calm down the traffic coming and going out of that development. So I'm really happy with it, and I approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And that is it for the list of parties of record. And Jackie, have anything else to add before we...
I had a short presentation, but it's contained in front of you. I really don't need to go over much of it. Really, with the conditions of approval, what I wanted to point out was, for the buffering, you'll notice in your packet, there's some underlying language about a deviation that was requested. And that was a deviation that we just, to a Land Development Code regulation that we just passed a few months ago relative to enhanced buffering standards for gas station uses. They're still providing the same number of plantings, it's just a reduced strip.
Okay.
And it's in the interchange, they're putting in a turn lane, so staff felt that that deviation was appropriate.
Okay.
But otherwise, staff agrees with applicant's presentation and be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Good. Council, I gotta tell you, I mean, having sat through the original case on this one right here and knowing what we had went through negotiating with the parking and whatnot, with all the commercial that was, had been planned there, and the fear that we had about how much traffic was gonna put in, it's, I'm real happy with what I see here. That interconnectivity with Home Depot, oh my gosh, that's gonna be just really beneficial to the entire community. So I think this is a great plan, and thanks for staff and the applicant for working so hard on this to get it to this point, so... Council, you have anything else?
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, and then I'll...
The interesting thing about this change is that we didn't have any complaints from neighboring, the Vasari folks. I mean, they didn't show up. So thanks to the developer for making this work with the neighborhoods as well.
Yep, good. Okay. Bill?
Jackie, do you know the value of the impact fee credits that we'll be giving eventually?
No, sir, we do not.
Do you have any idea how many dollars it is?
I'd have to defer to their transportation engineer, but I'm not sure if they're even aware. There's so many moving targets and parts.
For the record, Wayne Arnold, Mr. Longart, we don't know the full value of those now. That's part of the negotiation that we'll have to have between the city and Lee County DOT. We don't know exactly the signal enhancements that they're going to request from us. They've indicated that we might be able to reestablish a pole, but they may ask for, they could ask for a mast arm, which would be a benefit larger than just supporting our project. So I, there's a little bit of this that's still in flux. I think we know the major components, and it's reverse frontage road, interconnection, redoing the signal, extending Quail's Nest, and installing a turn lane on Benita Beach Roads.
So it could be thousands of dollars.
Yes, for sure. Yeah, I mean, the improvements, the improvements, if on our own, are going to be many hundreds of thousands of dollars. The turn lane itself approaches $200,000 just to construct a turn lane on Benita Beach Roads. Having seen over the past eight years, tax credits that come back to cost a tremendous amount to the city, that's why I asked the question. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, and it is a complicated calculation that is negotiated out so far as what's to the public's benefit and what's to your benefit directly.
That's correct.
I mean, that's what happens there. So, good question, Bill. Anyone else with a question or comment? What's your pleasure?
Let's move.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And there's a second. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacka?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we are on to number, item B.
And this is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Preserve Equity LLC for a project known as Preserve at Oak Creek to rezone a mixed-use plan development, MPD, and residential plan development, RPD, to a mixed-use plan development, MPD, to allow for up to 273 dwelling units, 220 standard density dwelling units, and 53 bonus density dwelling units, and 12,000 square feet of commercial uses on land located at 10500, 10550, 10580, 10600, 10650, and 1070 Dean Street. Benita Springs, Florida, on 17.46 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is second reading of the ordinance. The ordinance was first, first reading on January 6th, 2016, and it went to the zoning board on December 15th, 2015. The affidavit of publication is on file with the city clerk, and at this time, Jackie Genson will provide a history of the case.
Good morning again. For the record, Jacqueline Genson, this project as well was previously approved as two separate plan developments in 2007 and 2008. One was a residential plan development, the other one was a mixed-use plan development. The applicant, are two separate property owners, but they're acting as one, and the intent was to go ahead and develop the project as one. So the request before you is to go ahead and amend those plan developments and bring them into one project. Our Benita Springs comprehensive plan does require certain projects over acreage within a mixed-use area be developed as plan development, so that is also why that this isn't going through an administrative zoning review. Our comprehensive plan requires us to review these types of requests through a plan development process. Staff did recommend approval of the application request at the zoning board, which they also unanimously approved, a recommendation of approval. Some of the items that came up in question was the tracking of the bonus density application and the status, because we don't have a Land Development Code implementing tool right now, so this is taking a separate path. But the zoning does conceptually approve those density units, and we will be bringing back a bonus density contract to you later for your final review and approval. Some other items that came up were building placement. You'll see in the master concept plan, there is revised master concept plan, which does show along a portion of Dean Street, the building that's between two multifamily buildings, there's going to be a garage area, and that will provide some more building placement against the right-of-way that will be designed to look like residential elements to, again, really address that street frontage and make it more attractive in nature. We, the applicant, did relocate solid waste compactor away from the residence is on Marco Street to Dean Street, so that is a change. And also, there is a change to the deviation requests referencing square footage of trash because they are putting in a compactor versus just your normal dumpster enclosures. Some other concerns that come up, that came up were impacts to Dean Street. One of them was the queuing for left turn lane, but the applicant is working with Public Works and Wright Construction on establishing a roundabout to help with that traffic flow. Another concern was sidewalk connections past the project, but in terms of this project, the developer is installing a sidewalk along Dean Street. Once it goes past their boundary to the east, it becomes a city issue, so at that time, we don't have any sidewalk improvements planned. Another concern was the impact of the school and schoolchildren. We are handling that at the development order stage with the applicant as we speak, so that is a development order item that we are addressing. Parking was a concern of, do they have enough parking? Do they don't? In terms of the Land Development Code regulations for downtown, they have enough parking. They will be providing as a public benefit on-street parking along Dean Street, and we will be handling that as part of a separate process at the local development order stage. And another concern that came up was buffering and the preservation of Oak Creek, but you'll see in the master concept plan, there's replanting requirements for the preserved Oak Creek, and they are substantially preserving a lot of vegetation along Oak Creek. With that, the applicant is here to give his presentation, and staff is here for any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and proceed then with the applicant's presentation.
Good morning. For the record, Amanda Brock with Henderson Franklin on behalf of the applicant. We also have all these folks here. Don't worry, we're not intending to hear from everybody this morning. We do have a brief presentation that we'll be going through, but we do have the owners' representatives, as well as all of our experts available to you if you have any questions as we go through things. Wayne will again be handling the presentation for this one, so I'll hand it over to him. But I would just say we're extremely excited to be bringing this project to you. I know that Jackie just went over some of the issues that have come up, but most of them are addressed at the time of DO, and we have been working with staff very closely to address those things. It's been kind of a long process to get here, but we think that the project that we have before you this morning for approval is exactly what your vision was for this area, and we think that it will serve as the catalyst to promote more development and redevelopment in this area. So with that very brief statement, I'll let Wayne go through it, and then, again, we're available if you've got questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello again. Wayne Arnold with Grady Minor, representing the applicant. And as Amanda said, we're very happy to be here and excited to be involved in this project. It's, it's been a winding process and one that we've been working very closely with your staff, both in community development and in public works, to bring forward some, what we think are some very good public benefits that accrue to the community, as well as benefiting our client. I think you all are familiar with the project. Many of you were here the first time this came through. We're combining what was formerly a separate mixed-use plan development that's right at the intersection of Dean Street with the residential component. We're asking for 273 residential units, and we're asking for 12,000 square feet of commercial. There is a condition that allows us to administratively increase that commercial square footage. Staff is suggesting that they'd like to have more, and test the waters on the market for the square footage here. This is on the southern end of your Old 41 redevelopment efforts. But we are in your redevelopment area on the southern boundary. We're on Oak Creek. A little closer view, the site formerly housed many mobile homes. Those have been since removed. Our master plan is conceptual in nature. It shows you the approximate building placement for our multifamily buildings, and she might know that this isn't the best graphic, and I'll get to a better graphic that highlights it, but the mixed-use component will be at the intersection of Dean Street and Old 41. And we have a mixed-use building that actually will have retail and office on the ground floor with residential dwelling units above on Old 41. We have another mixed-use building on Dean Street. Staff has asked us, I'll get a more illustrative plan, I think it'll be better to show you. On this plan, it's a little easier to see, obviously Oak Creek to our south, but these are the two mixed-use areas that we have. Staff had asked us originally to modify this building and pull it closer to the intersection. With some of the utility improvements that you're working on through your enhancement project, Old 41, that's probably not going to be possible. There's some utility lines that we're gonna allow to cross through our property because it'll just be easier than taking them over to Old 41 and then down, so they'll come through our property. We had a public plaza shown here. Staff believes it would be better to, you know, allow this roundabout to occur. We've communicated with your Public Works Director and hope to bring a roundabout here to be a solution to some of your problems. If not, there are temporary turn lane opportunities because we are willing to donate the right-of-way to the city. But anyway, so that's our mixed-use component. We have two access points, both to Dean Street, and one will be here, the other is farther to the east. They're both going to be gated entrances to the residential component. Some of the other things that we've talked about, working with your staff, I've got a list of things that we've been working on. We're going to be providing, just go through the list, on-street parking on Dean Street. We're gonna be doing underground utilities on Dean Street, so the FPNL lines will go underground. We're gonna be taking in some of your stormwater from Dean Street through our project. It'll help with some of your water quality enhancement opportunities. We've agreed to provide a pathway and kayak launch on Oak Creek. It'll probably be somewhere in this location. We've agreed to also allocate at least three parking spaces in our commercial component for that kayak and canoe launch facility. So those are some of the benefits that we're accruing. Jackie described one of the changes that we made, and it doesn't reflect on this plan, but what was discussed was somehow connecting these two buildings on Dean Street to help bring that more urban facade forward to the street. And I think everybody's preference, I think, would have been to pull it a little closer to Dean Street, but because of some other underground utilities and the sidewalk and things of that nature, we can't really pull it as tight to the street. But what it does do is it results in a project that will kind of have that feel. This is looking from the Old 41 Dean Street intersection, looking to the southeast. And you can see the public plaza that probably, I think everybody, as we started discussing, this probably isn't the best location for the public plaza. It's on the south end of your development area. The public gathering spots should probably locate a little farther north. So this, part of this will be utilized for the roundabout, and then we'll probably try to bring this building a little closer to the intersection. But that is the mixed-use building that has residential on the second floor. And this building has a, obviously, opportunity for second story, but it's, that is reflecting really a single-story building with a false second story in it to help bring that urban feel to your streetscape. Just one of the shots of our potential recreational amenity internal to the residential. And that, again, is part of the view from Dean Street. We're gonna put in a street wall, which is reflected with the wrought iron and columns. And then, one of the other enhancements, this shows on-street parking that'll be constructed on Dean Street. So the new cross-section shows the two travel lanes, as well as the parking lane, and then we have a relocated sidewalk, and then you can see our street wall and then the building orientation. So I think this is bringing forward the urban feel that you've seen in multiple presentations on your Old 41 redevelopment presentation. We're consistent with your redevelopment efforts, your comprehensive plan, meeting your Land Development Code, except as we're deviating, and we are taking advantage of your bonus density opportunity. As Jackie mentioned, it'll come forward, we think, on your February 17th agenda to memorialize the bonus density agreement. But some of the public benefits that I didn't mention to you, the Dixie Moon Cafe, I know it's on your agenda later, but that's something that our client has agreed to pay for the relocation of that Dixie Moon. And I know that, I don't know if the location's changing from the presentation I heard previously, but our client has pledged to go ahead and pay for that relocation of the Dixie Moon. We're accommodating the public stormwater from the Dean Street project. We're providing land to construct and willing to construct the roundabout for the city as part of your Old 41 improvements. We're providing the on-street parking for Dean Street, providing a kayak and canoe launch in Oak Creek, as well as parking. We're burying the power lines on Dean Street. And the estimated tax revenue annually is about $500,000 to build out for this project to the city, which certainly a big enhancement for your Old 41 area. That's my summary of the presentation. Like I said, we're really excited about it. Our client has submitted the development order, and your staff has had its first review Our client has submitted the development order, and your staff has had its first review of that. So he's ready to move ahead and hope we can break ground this spring.
Okay. Any council, any questions for Wayne before we go to the parties' record? Mike, want to mic them?
On the one building that's going to be one story but look like two stories, why not just go two stories, get extra offices or even an extra residential or two?
Well, I think the way staff has written the condition, it does give us that opportunity to go ahead and construct those two stories. We can increase the amount of square footage over the 12,000 square feet that we've asked for administratively as we go through the development order process.
All right. Anything else? Okay, Pete, go ahead.
The building that you said you wanted to have closer to Old 41 that staff recommended, but because of utilities. I'd like to hear staff's thoughts or the conversation with bringing that closer.
Okay. I'll let Jackie respond to that.
I think that's, that was not the slide, but I think you know what I'm asking, so. Yeah, maybe, actually, probably that one.
Okay.
Because you're talking about that building on Dean Street, right?
That's correct. It would be this building that staff has asked us to slide this direction. And there may be room to move it slightly, but I'm pretty sure it's an engineering conflict that we had.
How difficult is that conflict?
I don't know who best to answer that. Brent Addison is here from our office, who's been discussing with Matt Feeney in your office.
Peter, maybe we should hear from staff, their feelings on it. I think that was your first question. Anybody from staff want to speak towards why you would want that moved this way? Where the importance of it?
And let me preface it, I tend to be in agreement with you that you move it a little closer. So I'd like to hear your thoughts as well.
Matt Feeney, for the record, I'm going to provide, I'm going to defer to Brent, actually. He's been working with our consultants at AB&amp;B with how to marry our stormwater exfiltration system and conveyance system with some needs with the Dean Street project. So I'll let him speak to the details as to why that's not possible, because I tend to agree with you two.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
And I have no idea what anybody's talking about. So I hope someone says something in English here pretty quick. Hi.
Brent Addison, for the record, civil engineer with Grady Minor. There actually were two reasons why we couldn't move this forward. One of them was for the stormwater.
Wait, before we talk about that, could somebody please tell me why you would want? Why does staff want the building moved forward?
Staff would like the building moved forward because it creates a more urban environment with your building placement closer to the street. So at the intersection of Dean Street and Old 41, to have a bigger building placement, aesthetically provides a better street facade. So that is community development, that's a planning perspective.
It looks better.
It looks better. So that is what the planners would love to have. But at the end of the day, we have to deal with the real utility conflicts.
Okay, so it's not a traffic, it's not a traffic circulation thing, it's aesthetic.
It's aesthetics.
Okay.
Okay.
You're on.
Okay. So there was two reasons. One reason is we're routing stormwater from Dean Street and from your stormwater system through the project, through that parking lot currently. We're talking about the, you know, how that's, we're still working on that in the development order stages and working with your engineer that's doing the improvements. The other reason that that separation is still there is because there's an emergency access requirement for fire trucks. Actually, coming out right here, there's going to be a stabilized area where when the fire trucks enter the commercial area, they don't have room to turn around. And that was actually established in the previous development order back in, I think, 2006. So we're maintaining that access for fire truck routing through there.
So you don't have any nefarious reasons for why you don't want to move a building up this way? It's more of a practical matter? Would you describe it like that?
In my opinion, yes, sir.
Okay. And staff, or do you kind of agree that there are some practical matters why they can't or not?
Yes. I mean, for engineers, yes, they tell us planners how.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Yes, please. And that leads into another question. You had made a comment about that public plaza there. And we're correct, what we're looking at there, that plaza is on the north end of the property, correct?
Correct.
All right. And you were saying it would be better utilized on the south end of the property? Or did I, I could have easily misunderstood you.
I could have misspoke, but what I intended to say was, I think, in discussing with staff, they felt that a public plaza elsewhere along Old 41 would be more appropriate than to provide one at this location, just because this is at the far south part of your redevelopment efforts. And you're going to have more public spaces up toward the library site and up toward the park. And that's the more public gathering spot where you're going to have more commercial.
And staff's thoughts on that, yeah?
Well, let me just say, first off, it's been great working with the developer, and we've come to an agreement on a lot of issues. I just want to make it clear that what you're looking at there is not what will actually happen, even if you were to approve this, only because the roundabout will take some of the land that you're looking at that has the fountain and the public space on it. We believe that we can get both of those buildings moved closer to the corner, even by a little bit, by the time that you put the roundabout in, because they're donating all the land for the roundabout. And we're not asking for any other right-of-way from any other property owners around there, that you're also, you're going to have more of that urban feel anyway. The whole philosophy, though, is when you're in an urban environment, you don't want people walking along the sidewalks not having anything to experience or look at as they're walking along the sidewalks. And so while that's a beautiful thing, it actually is more of a suburban-type feel to it with the, with the open area there. So we're trying to just bring the buildings closer to the corner. When you put in the land, when you put the roundabout in there, the buildings are actually going to be even appear closer to the road than they do here. Is that okay, Jackie, to do our?
Correct. All right. Objects are closer than they appear? And final question, if you wanted to go, if you could go to that parking on Dean Street slide, please? There you go. Okay, so that would be, if we're driving down Dean Street, that would be on the?
It's looking east.
Yes, looking east down Dean Street. So the, our project is, this is one of the residential buildings on our property. And we'll be rebuilding the sidewalk six foot wide. And then, we have a parking lane and then the travel lanes.
So I guess, all right, so my question is, when you're driving down the street, this proposal here has people driving by looking at cars parked on the property, but just off of the street?
Yes, some of the parking on-street will be utilized by our residents or can be utilized by our residents. But it is going to be public parking on-street parking.
But those cars there are on the property?
No, these, this is in your Dean Street right-of-way, so.
Okay, I was looking at the picture.
Yeah, this is a travel lane going east. And then, this would be the parked car on Dean Street.
Because the question was, right, the look and the feel, staff, is that what we're looking to accomplish? But, okay. Very good. Thank you very mu, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to, before we go on, for everybody's, to further elaborate on what Carla said, during the land development order process, this business about where the building, but it's not like they're going to go to the, go start building this right now. And that, you zoned it with these buildings exactly in these places. That's not how it happens, right? Goes to, it goes through a land development order process, and the development order process is when you decide these other things, right?
Correct. Some of the items where there's deviations, they will be locked into certain standards. But otherwise, there is some flexibility at the development order stage for certain things to shift.
Yeah, comprehensive plan, big brush, zoning, smaller side setbacks, that kind of thing. Development order is where our rules get implemented, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Bill?
Yes. How many stories of the bigger buildings, is it three stories?
Yes, we're proposing three-story buildings for the residential.
Elevators.
The three-story buildings by state statute are not required to have elevators, and these are proposed to be walk-up units. There are approximately 80-plus units that'll be ground floor units out of the 273.
Well, I can share something with you. I know about three-story places that you have to walk up, and I've had to do that for my son. It's extremely tiring to have to do that. So if you have older people, it would be even more difficult. May I suggest that I know elevators cost a lot of money. But by the same token, if you're going to sell those things to older people, if you don't have elevators, I think you're going to have a difficult time. Unless, this is going to be ownership, right, not rentals?
Well, I think that right now, it's programmed to be a rental community.
Oh, okay.
And I know that, just looking at the marketplace, I believe there's only one other three-story complex that has an elevator in it, in, between Fort Myers and Marco. And that's a senior housing, dedicated senior housing project.
So it's going to be all rental?
Yes, sir. That's proposed to be.
Okay.
And I have to tell you, I mean, when it comes to that, and Bill, thanks for pointing that out, but from my experience, from my kids are all 30s, I was going to say 20-somethings, 30-somethings now already. This is, this, these are the kind of workforce housing places, great places. I mean, that they've lived in, whether it's the other coast, whether it's this coast. It's what they can't find in this area right now. We don't have any places for our kids to come live when they're looking for jobs, starting out. And my daughter, you know, has been in broadcasting, and her husband is, you know, he's worked with Simon Properties. They, they're not ready to buy because he moves around a lot. So they need nice places like this that they can rent. I think that's just perfect for our downtown area. So, and I understand that other places that will be catering to a different demographic, well, then, they'll be designed differently. So, anyway, yes.
I was going to wait until after public comment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I guess we'll go ahead. And you know, what we know about downtown renovation is you have to have residents down there first in order to gain retail. So the, and what we've tried to do as a city, a council, is to assure that we get residences down there by providing some incentives for developers, and that's what they're doing. The, I think the concern among the neighborhood is, how are you going to assure that this is the kind of livable place that protects the quality of life and the artisan of the history of Obanita? So I think the architecture is fine. The point that the mayor just made is one I think is most critical. And that is how we find housing for younger professionals who are firefighters, teachers, public safety folks. And that's what we need. If we're going to bring FGCU's classes down to the wonder gardens, which I've been assured by President Bradshaw we are, then we need to have a place where students can live and staff members can live. And this is exactly what we need. The issue I have, I've been fighting all along my, conceptually, is how you describe this as what we're trying to provide to younger professionals without violating age discrimination acts in housing equality. So if we can, if we can, I think if we can assure the neighbors that that's where we're going, that that's what we intend to do as a city council, then I think it's going to be a lot simpler to get past our neighbors. So I guess my question to you, Mr. Mayor, is have we, has staff looked at the issues of age discrimination questions and equal housing? If we propose this as housing for young professionals? I'm sorry to use the words, but I don't know how else to do it.
For the record, Jacqueline Gensen, this project, staff, for zoning purposes, we look at compatibility. We look at the type of unit that's being proposed. Is it consistent, compatible with our vision for the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations that are set forth? This sub-area is designated to support multifamily housing. We do not look at the form of ownership. We do not look at rent control items such as that. But what I can tell you is our downtown as a whole does provide the opportunity for a mix of housing unit types. And that's what you want for smart growth and in your downtown areas, to have that diversity. And the market hopefully will regulate itself. But in terms of this zoning proposal, staff did not ask for price points. We're not supposed to ask if it's rental or owner occupied. So in the sense of this request, you know, it's the multifamily type of unit. If it's price-pointed to hit that target market, fantastic. But that's not something that zoning looks at at this stage.
And furthermore, and I'm sorry, just wanted to add that that's why product design. Christine Ross and I have been working, trying to figure out that exact question. It's a really important question. When the city becomes involved, how do you, how do you encourage a certain housing for a certain spectrum that you're missing? Well, it's really difficult. But the only way that you can really do that, that we've been able to think of, is through product design. The design, who will this appeal to? I mean, and so that's really more what you're looking for. If this is appealing to that demographic, both cost-wise and both location-wise, and by the amenities and what's near there, it will sell to that, or will be available to them. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, and that's exactly why I think we're trying to go with this, with this project. The, I guess, the, there are other pieces coming on. We know that what's going in, the money we're putting in this infrastructure downtown is going to pay off for us, because we're getting private investment downtown. We're getting, I know one piece is supposed to be lofts, which would appeal to students and artists and that sort of thing. But that clearly is exactly where the, I think the mayor was going, is it's the kind of building you build. But we need to make sure that we do something for the young professionals. If I've used the wrong word, I apologize. But it is for younger families with, who are servicing this city and have to live somewhere outside the city. So if we, if we can find some way to market it, to prepare it, so that we can provide that kind of housing, then I'm all, I'm for it. Frank, I'm for the project. I'm just concerned about the small pieces.
And we have separate policy items, such as when we do our evaluation and appraisal, we'll be looking at our housing element, which that would probably be a very appropriate time to go ahead and address that, if the city feels that that is a need that we need to address. So we can do that in our housing element for the comprehensive plan. And as well, we do have other bonus density programs that do help to target low-income, very low-income, which are not, which could be our workforce housing element. It just depends on how HUD establishes our median incomes. So there are different programs in place where we offer bonus density incentives, either onsite or offsite, where we can help, you know, provide that affordable housing need. But for downtown, we have projects that are owner-occupied lofts, which will hit a different target price market. And we still have people that are building single-family homes as well. So there's definitely a variety of housing options available for downtown.
Is it fair to, is it fair to ask the developer, presenter, what the target market is?
You can ask them, but it's not something that zoning staff would require.
I don't violate the law, and I don't want to violate any secrecy's. But I think it's important for the council to understand where this market is.
You can definitely ask.
And again, we're not trying to hide anything, going back to your nefarious comment earlier.
But it's been.
Well, if you are, you're doing a horrible job.
I know, right? To be honest, I mean, it's kind of market-driven. It's what the market will bear. I represent the developer, the developer's here. I don't know that they have that information in terms of economics of, you know, what the price points are going to be and marketed. But I think we see the same thing that you're seeing, which is the need for this kind of multifamily product. And that's why we're looking at rentals and not condo ownership. But I can ask, you know, the developer to come up and provide more detailed information if that's what you're looking for, but.
Well, I think I'm, I think I'm pretty capable of understanding how you market and what strategy is.
Sure.
So my question is, what's the real, what's the real product? Are we really trying to get to that, that group of people who need homes here that we've been talking about for the last 10 minutes?
That certainly our intent, and I think that's.
That's all I need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go over to Peter, and I'll come, I'll come to you.
Right, and thanks, Bill and Steve, for bringing this up. And it's got my wheels spinning a little bit. I love the project, but I think, I think we really need to look at elevators. And I find myself asking now, what about handicap accessibility for the third and second floor? Can you talk through that for a few minutes? You know, young professionals may need handicap accessibility. Elderly folks may need handicap accessibility. And I think elevators would solve all of these problems, no matter what the demographic is.
I think we can certainly have the developer's representative come forward and talk to you. I mean, they've done a lot of market research with their competitors and what the product needs to bear for our market. And as I mentioned before, most three-story developments in southwest Florida do not have elevators. And by statute, anything above three stories does require an elevator.
Yeah, and then my experience, having, my kids have moved all over the place in the last 10 years. It, these three-story places, they're really nice. They've got little clubhouses for them, stuff like that. The handicapped accessible units are usually on the first floor. That's what, these are the units that are reserved for that. And then, when the ones that are the upper-story ones, you either like them or you don't like them because you have to carry your furniture up and down the stairs. I mean, that's just, that's what our transient children love. I mean, are these places? I mean, that's what, that's what it is. And I think it's probably price point more than anything. If you were building the luxury condominiums for people who are spending a million dollars, you'd be probably putting elevators in, you wouldn't bat an eye. But come on up, tell us that I am wrong.
Thank you. For the record, Mark Mariano with Mosaic Development. Mosaic Development is a partnership with Halverson Blazer Development Group. Jim Halverson, somewhere here in the audience, I didn't see him. But so just to add a little color, the Mosaic Development Group is actually a sister company of Incor Residential. Incor Residential is a third-party fee management company for multifamily apartments. And we flex between 3,000 and 5,000 units here in Florida. Our bread and butter is really Naples to Tampa to Orlando. And really, we manage three-story garden-style walk-ups. And I can tell you, none, zero, none of those three stories have elevators. So, you know, basically, industry standard is for these three-story walk-ups is that elevators aren't included. So we don't intend to have elevators included into the, into the product that we have here. But certainly, you know, with the 88 units on ground floor, we think we have a good mix of accessibility for, you know, those residents that may not want to walk up the stairs, but also want to have an active lifestyle[1797.37] stairs, but also wanna have an active lifestyle that we're, that we're presenting and that we're gonna be marketing here. Really, when you ask the tenant profile, I guess, if you might say, it's anybody. You know, our, our rents right now are set at 900 for our one-bedrooms and our junior units, up to 1,700 for our three-bedrooms. So, basically, you know, you could have an individual in a $900 a month unit, family in a 1,700 three-bedroom unit, old, young, it doesn't matter. From the ADA accessibility perspective, will of course meet all ADA standards. Ground floor units will be accessible. All public spaces will be accessible, sidewalks, parking, et cetera, will all be accessible for ADA and meet ADA standards, and that's basically it.
And your company, I mean, your, your vested interest is to continue the success of, of your facilities, right?
Yeah, and, and, you know, you talk about security and making sure that it's, you know, functional and, and, and weaves into the, the fabric of the community. I mean, that's basically how we have to operate these things because if they don't work in the community, then they don't work from the performer perspective, and they're not a successful project for anybody. So, you know, the experience that we bring, 18, 20 years of managing multifamily projects, obviously will be borne out in this project. And, you know, we're very excited to be here, and we think this is a great location for, for this product type because I think it's starving for this product type. And, you know, and the amenities that are downtown, what the city's doing in the, the 41 redevelopment, fantastic. So, we're great, and we're grateful to be on board, and we're, we're excited to get this one started.
Okay, good. Questions?
And the price of the elevators, spread out over the number of units and how it would affect monthly rent?
Yeah, it's a twofold issue. Elevator costs and basically elevator runs are about $100,000 for installation. The bigger, the bigger nut there is maintenance. The maintenance, the, the monthly maintenance draw is an issue for a three-story garden-style product like this because it takes away from other, you know, other monies that would be going to, to maintenance, upkeep, et cetera. So, they're a big draw on the, the yearly and routine maintenance on the, on the project.
And how much is maintenance?
I can, I'd have to go to our operations people. They can probably cite it. But, to be honest with you, it's probably a number we would need to look into. None of our properties have it.
Well.
But I.
It increases the rent, but I mean, spread out over number of units, over a number of years, 20 or 30 years, it can't be that substantial.
And again, I, I'd have to look into it because we, we do not manage any properties that have elevators.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions?
And, and I can, and even let me add a little bit of color. The new product that's coming on board, so there's six developments in Lee County right now, garden-style, three-story, competitors to us, you know, there would be competition. We're, we're developing a product in Fort Myers, three-story garden-style. None of them have elevators.
Okay. I'm gonna go over to Janet. Janet, you've been waiting patiently. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty. I just have to just put in my two cents along with what the mayor and Councilman McIntosh was saying about the young professionals. And I think a lot of what happens is that the definitions for the words workforce, apartments, things like that, that, that creates that type of fear factor within the other residents in the areas to what is coming, what it could turn into, all of that. But I need to echo with my work with the university students with, like with Dr. Steve, we hear this all the time, that for them graduating school and just going into entry-level positions, we can't keep those students close because there aren't places for them to live. And now being part of all of this excitement downtown, and then we just had an alumni, leadership alumni event yesterday, there were a lot of young folks present there, and they were just so excited to hear that there was gonna be opportunity for them to be a part of our downtown. So, I am very, very supportive of this. The one thing, though, that I will probably say is I differ with staff a little bit on is the moving of the buildings. I love the public open space idea, and I think that if we're gonna be looking for those future cafes to be part of your mixed-use project, that I hope that as we go forward, that they, they remember that we need to have some outside space because that's why we live here. We wanna be outside. So, I'm hoping that there'll be a way to, when it gets to that point, integrate, integrate that there will always be a little open space, public space for those restaurants and cafes that you hope to engage with on your property. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. And what I'm gonna do now is go ahead and go to the parties of record.
Thank you.
And then let's see what the public has to say here, and, and then we can carry on this conversation. First, I need to let everyone know, or not everyone, a few of you lucky people, that if you're parked over at the, the post office and you're in the grass or probably someplace you prob, that's not actually a parking space, you're probably gonna get towed. So, I'll look down, and guys can go ahead. I won't look at, we won't, we won't, we're not looking at you.
Please come back.
We're not looking at you. Okay. There you go.
What happened?
I guess I should, okay, let me call your name. That was, that was bad timing.
On-street parking.
Holy moly.
Oh, my.
Yeah, that was probably, we'll, we'll do the parties of record thing up a couple of times just to be sure we get everyone. Hi.
Hi. I need to just let you know, I received some requested changes to one of the conditions, so I might as well do that right now. If that's okay.
All right, go ahead.
No objection to the language. It deals with the bonus density agreement, and it would be in condition one in the second paragraph that starts the MPD allows. No change with the underlying language, the redevelopment overlay district. The next sentence will be changed, and let me read it for the record. It'll state, "The additional 53 bonus units requested pursuant to Benita Plan Policy 1.1.11B to B shall be applied for and granted in accordance with the bonus density agreement entered into between the city and Mosaic at Oak Creek LLC and not, and shall not be held to the amendment to the city's land development code or administrative code addressing bonus density in the old US 41 area as such amendment occurred after the date of the zoning action."
Gotcha. All right. Okay, now, have no fear, I'll call the parties of record. We'll have some more conversation, and then once everybody who left comes back in, we'll call them again, just to be sure they weren't missed. Okay, parties of record, number one, Martha Simons. Martha, are you in the audience today? No? Okay. Rick Steinmeier, I see you there. Come on up.
There you go. Now, the on-street parking, is that, that's gonna be on road right away? It's not controlled by this development? Anybody can park on that overnight?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. But that's part of the park, park, part of the parking for this development? Considered part of the parking. One of the commissioner, councilmen here came brought up the handicap, very limited to the ground floor. Also, are there handicap parking spots involved in here at all? That's another question. How about short-term rentals? This might be good, $900 or $1,700 for seasonal rental. That might be good, but you come in May and June, I don't think you're gonna have anybody living there at that price. If the average, I took the average from the study of the, the guy that we paid to study the area downtown in the, in the family income of 2.7 people was like $49,000. I divided that out, and it comes out to about $9 an hour. So, that's $18,000 a year if the guy works 20, 20, works 2,000 hours a week, I mean, a year. He can't afford, he can't afford this place. This is not affordable housing. Elevators are expensive, that's for sure. I live in a five-story that, boy, if the elevator breaks down, everybody's in a good mood. But they are a maintenance problem. I understand that. But I thought we, we're gonna do something for the handicapped people. Now, firemen to make $100,000 a year, this is not, they're not in need of affordable housing. I'm sorry. They get paid plenty for what they do. I would run into a burning, burning fire is not everybody's cup of tea. I will guarantee you that. But I, you know, how about the carpenter? How about the plumber? How about all these other people that really act, or the people that work at Walmart or Kmart and Speedway and all these other retail offices that make it the most $10 an hour? This is not affordable to anybody except the snowbirds. I don't know where this developer came from, why he thinks this is a good project as far as that is concerned. I wish him luck. It'd be nice to build this property out. We're gonna have people standing on top of each other, carrying furniture up and down steps. I'm not too in favor of this project, and sorry for my bad attitude. Thank you.
It's all right. Let's see. John Mathis. John, you here? Nope. All right. And then we are to Brian Farrar. Nope. Dennis Church. Bob Bachman. See you here. Richard Garner. Nope. Mark Russ. And Fred Forbes. I thought Fred out there. Fred, would you like to come out and speak?
Fred Forbes, for the record. I am in favor of the project. I would offer these comments on the elevators. Number one, I think the testimony given by the applicant and someone else is one of the better reasons you want elevators. If there's only two places locally, somewhere down in Collier and somewhere a little north of here, that have elevators on three-story buildings, that's a real good reason to have them here because it's gonna put these in demand, and you're gonna have less vacancies. And I really don't think it would add that much on a per-unit basis. And while I'm at it, I think it's ludicrous that we're not in the proposed ordinance on bonus density. Giving credit for elevators, you're giving credit for buying art for public places, all kind of other things. I realize that benefits the public, but making the project better is the best way to make that downtown renovation project successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Or, I'm sorry, that was a bad habit, or a good habit to be in. Sorry about that. Dennis Gilkey. No? Oh, there you are. See, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna start, starting to time. People sit in the back. We're starting to time as soon as they stand up. So, make everybody stand up front, sit up front.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, you heard me say that. I was on the microphone, wasn't I?
I am short, though.
Hey.
Thank you. Dennis Gilkey, for the record, resident of Benita Springs for, since 89. I've, I've known Halverson for several years. He has been held back by both the market and also by the density. And I think now you've got the market. He needs the density to make this work. And, you know, when you have a rental apartment complex, you really need 250-plus units. You saw that with the one out on 75, to really get the economy to scale and to make it work. And I, I think you need to recognize that there's a market out there. He's gotta meet the market for the rent rate, but also, you know, the cost to make, make the performer work. So, the, the elevators sounds great, but if, if others aren't doing it, there's really no reason for us to give him a market disincentive, a cost disincentive, basically, where he's doing quite a few things to meet the bonus density requirements. I don't support bonus, I think the problem is our densities are too low. That's why we, we probably shouldn't even have bonus density, and you've got your ordinance that I think's a Band-Aid on that coming up later. But, but in reality, you really need higher densities in your downtown, and you should do that by right, in my view. But in any case, he has, you've squeezed a lot of blood out of that turnip, and I think the elevators would be taking it just past the point where they probably make a feasible development of this. So, I, I would suggest you recommend, or you approve it as recommended by the staff. He's, he's met many, many different requirements over and above what a normal developer would be required to do. The roundabout of all the places, this is the one place I would support a roundabout, more than any other place that you're proposing them on Old 41. This is the appropriate place for a couple of reasons, mainly so the traffic can make the turning movements on Dean, which is a major road, east-west roadway for you in downtown, and also it doesn't back up into the Benita Beach Road traffic. So, it's a, it's a, really a good place for a roundabout of all places. Anyway, the elevators, I, I think is just, it's out of place in the discussion here, and I, I would suggest that that not be anything that you try to require of the developer. I think that's out of place for you as a city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And let's go to Michael Quinn. Michael, you here? Nope. Gary Price? No. Sorry. Amy Cooperman? Amy, you're here? No. Let's see. Says Marina, I need glasses all of a sudden. That must, that's what 16 years sitting in this chair does. Marina Moro? No. And then Frank DeCostol? Nope. Okay, that's all the parties of record I had, and we'll go on from there. All right, council, do you have any other questions here or comments?
You, you better run back through that list in case someone came back in.
Yeah, I know a lot of those people. I didn't see any of those people walk back in. I'm gonna read the list one more time, not the whole list, but Martha Simons, you're not here. If, if you hear my, your name, stand up. It's not Martha. John Mathis, Brian Farrar, Dennis Church, Bob Bachman, Richard Garner, Mark Russ, Michael Quinn, Gary Price, Amy Cooperman, Mariana Moro, and Frank DeCostol. No? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, council, what's your pleasure? I, I'm gonna express my opinion here. I think it, it is a great project. I can't wait. This is what we've been working for, for 16 years, to have something like this. We, we all knew it was gonna become a, we're looking to become a city, and to have a wide variety of different peoples here. There's gonna be many other projects, of many other, there's gonna be places for people with a lot of money and people with workforce housing and rentals and condos. There'll be all kinds of different things. Not every project can be everything to everybody. That's what we do, we're done development code for. What we don't wanna do is right out of the gate, price everybody out of living here so this remains empty forever. We've put a lot of work into this. Let's get, as Dennis said, let's get some people living down there. And that's my opinion. I'm in favor of this 100%. But what do you think, council?
Let's move to approve.
There's a motion to approve as, as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great project, and I think we're not looking to be the same-old, same-old. You know, the Benita Beach Visioning Road is, study is not looking to make Benita Springs the same-old, same-old. We're up here, the downtown project is not looking to make Benita Springs the same-old, same-old. So, to hear that no other building in the area that's three stories high has an elevator, well, you know, what about the young mother with a baby in her arm, taking groceries up to the third floor? I mean, let's make this project a little bit better. I'm hearing $100,000 for minimum cost over the number of units. That's a fraction, fraction of a fee. If, if we're in partnership here to make downtown all that it can be, let's make it all that it can be. This is not that cost prohibitive. So, I think we need elevators, or we need more handicap accessibility. To tell handicapped person, you have to live on the first floor, they may not wanna live on the first floor. So, I think we're close here, but I think we need to ratchet it up a bit.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Mike?
Well, just had a question. If they did do the elevators, it would have to be approximately where the stairs are, and I'm guessing there's two sets of stairs for each building, and you can't go from one side to the other. You'd have to actually go down and then take the other set of stairs? That's how most of these garden units are set up? Can we still get response back, or?
Oh, from the applicant? Sure, absolutely.
We have our architect here who can describe that exactly. I just wanna clarify, though, with respect, he's conferring, with respect to the cost issue. There are 10 buildings, so I believe Mark said it's $100,000 per install. So, that would be a million for the installation, just to clarify that. So, it's not just the $100,000 over the.
And the way I'm thinking, it, it looks like it might need two per building.
Okay. And I'll let our architect address that.
And it does require two per building. There are four staircases in each building, the standard buildings. We have a studio building, which the units are, obviously, studios, 560 square feet, and it's the longest of the buildings. It's 48 units. The ground floor is pursuant to Fair, the Fair Housing Act adopted by Florida. All of the units have to have accessibility. Just in comparison, a hotel is only required to have 5% of the units be handicap accessible. Now, we have approximately a third of the units are handicap accessible. So, the numbers bear on your requests and on, and. So if you have any other questions?
No, well, I just wanted to say, I've lived in, you know, this style of unit before, and it is generally the younger professionals that, you know, just starting out in life, and that's what we're looking to attract, so.
I have a son, you know, he's just starting out on the third floor, myself, so.
I have two. Anyway, I'm glad. Yeah, and towards that point, this whole elevator conversation, I have to tell you that after watching, again, my kids go through that experience of trying to find a place to live, $100 a month makes or breaks it. $100 a month. If it's, I mean, they'll see a place that's, if it's $1,600 a month and they can pay 15, they don't go there. They don't, they, $100 a month to these kids, these young professionals, is everything. It's everything. It's nothing. So it's easy to stand up here and say, build two elevators on a building, how much could it cost? Wouldn't matter. I mean, I'm totally against us making a requirement that no one else, no one, who are we building for? Who are we building for, then? And then what you just said, a third, a full third of these, if you said a full third of these things need to be accessible by elevator, they are. A full third of these apartments are accessible to anyone that can roll, motivate, anything, to everyone. So I think that's pretty good. A full third, that's a pretty good score. So council, what else we got? Steven?
I just want to say, for the last 18 years of my career flying for Delta, I spent, we used to fight to get to the third floor. There was something about everybody wanting to be on the third floor because of noise. We didn't want anybody above us, so. And, yeah, it was a struggle at times, you know, you want to pick up, you know, groceries and this and that, or sometimes if you had a little injury, it was a little difficult, but no elevators. I never had a problem with it, and I support this project. So that's it.
Okay. All right, well, wait, yes, any other discussion? You have, let's see, we have, any ex parte communications here? This is something I forgot to do last time, sorry. Ex parte communications, have anybody have anything? Let's start at the end, anything?
I've been present during some presentations.
Janet, you'll have to be sure that that's filed with Audrey.
With the applicant, with the city clerk, yes.
With the city clerk. And Steven, you have anything? You have anything?
Watching the zoning online, does that count?
It actually does. So if you did watch the zoning, if you've been contacted by LPA members, or by zoning board members who may have opinions, or members of the public, that would be something you need to disclose on the record.
And strangely enough, communication with staff is an ex parte.
It is.
Give me an A B.
Talk to me.
That's kind of weird, but true.
Watching zoning is...
Yes, watching zoning, because you're...
What if I wasn't really paying attention?
What if it was on, but I wasn't paying attention?
Which is pretty, you know me, that's pretty possible. Bill, do you have anything? Any ex parte? Mike? Mike, Peter?
Just the online zoning, so.
Okay, thank you very much for reminding us of that. Council, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion?
Motion.
There, we have a motion, a second on the floor?
Second.
Speaking of not paying attention, there's a motion, a second, to approve this as presented. Okay, any other discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Lean, yes.
Aye. Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Yes.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
I just want to hug you guys sometimes. How awesome is it to see something, actually, you're really, are you really going to build something? Holy moly. Thank you so much. Everybody, thank you.[1742.78]